I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting to, for September 26, 2016, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Paskett?
Here.
Ms. Berns Wester?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Dr. Davidson Avila?
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. My agenda is not on the way up. Minutes from September 12th. September 12th.
It's hot. I am getting high because I have been inside.
Okay, I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2016.
Second.
Would you, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Paskett?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Recognition of the five essential leading schools. You're first off. Mark Corral.
Thank you, President Ross. I've asked a couple of our building administrators to join us this evening. Actually, I was in Springfield today on a panel regarding learning more and working for the superintendents around doing more work, intentional work around the topic of meaningful family engagement. And one of the things that sort of jumped out at me, they cited this five essential research, and they talked about these five areas. When you focus on ambitious instruction and your teachers are collaborating and you have effective leaders and you're working hard to engage families and your community and you have a culture and climate that is conducive to learning. And you focus on all of those five things with intentionality, you're 10 times more likely to significantly improve students' growth and student learning. And these principles actually have done that from the perspective of students. Students were surveyed from the perspective of parents, parents were surveyed, and from the perspective of staff. So, it is, I'm proud of them. They've worked very, very hard and they continue to work very, very hard. When we receive our results, Building Live, we received 28, 28 reports. These schools did very well and we wanted to acknowledge them. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Turner from Keller Primary School to come up. Mark Bills, Mrs. Rogers, please come up and, guys, just go ahead and come up. Rolling Acres, Mr. Barber. Washington Gifted, I call him Mr. P., Mr. Poles. Each of these schools, each of these schools received five stars, meaning they are well organized. And they received the highest score that you could receive on five essentials. So, again, it's Keller, Mark Bills, Rolling Acres, and Washington in that category. So, let's give them a nice round of applause. And what, and they've received a beautiful plaque and it's personalized with their pictures on it. And we celebrated them last week at our superintendent's meeting. So, I just wanted them to make maybe one or two minutes. I mean, this is, this is huge. I remember as a principal, I always aspired to get five stars. So, we couldn't, we couldn't let this slide. And so, we wanted to definitely acknowledge you. And Mr. Beeb, Mr. Barber, won't you just make a few comments in terms, and then, one or two minutes?
Thank you very much. We're honored for this. We, we all work hard. We have great staffs, great families. It really is a team effort. This is not something that we do by ourselves by any stretch. You know, for most of us, I think, we give teachers the opportunity to be creative in their classrooms, to pursue the lessons and ideas and just be creative, doing things that they want to do. And we kind of just try and get out of the way and encourage them and just give them that opportunity. So, it's just a great way to be recognized for this. Thank you very much. And our families are great and we just try and build a great relationship with them as well as our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Proud of your leadership. Ms. Rogers, just add one quick, quick note.
Sure. When we take a look at five essentials, I think one of, Mr. Barber talked about our teachers and our parents as a critical role. One of the nice things about the five essentials is it surveys the students. And so, I know at several schools, mine included, we put up the student data to encourage students. This is what you think about your, as it relates to rigorous instruction or as it relates to how students interact with each other. So, I think that the students having a voice and having their voice be posted for all of them to see is powerful.
Thank you. She represents Mark Bills. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Turner, what about Keller?
Hi there. We don't interview or survey the students at the primary level, but we do use the data that we get from the teachers and from the parents at our ULT. We analyze the results to see.
Can you tell them about the, what it's for the?
Universal Leadership Team. It's a, it's made up of leaders on our faculty and myself. And we look at the results to see what our faculty and what our parents say are doing well and what we need to work on. So, it's helpful. And it's, we have great families.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Poles from Washington Gifted?
One of the things about five essentials that I think is really important to note is the forming partnerships, not just within your school, within the community. We're very blessed to have wonderful parents, great adoptive school partners, and the students and teachers are phenomenal. It's hard work and we're constantly looking at where to reach day, trying to reinvent the things we do and keeping better the things we also do. But I remiss to say that it's definitely the teachers, the parents, and the students that make this all work and our wonderful community partners, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First, leadership goes a long way, right? So, thank you. Let's, let's recognize the schools that have received four stars, which is also very important. Those schools are Northmore, Lindbergh, Knoxville, and Knoxville Center. Their rating reflected, it means that they, they're organized schools and they're well positioned to get to the next level. So, I would like Mr. Thomas. I see Miss Sue Mulehi. And is Ms. Stockman here also? Angela Stockman? Yeah. Come on. Come up to the podium, please. And again, we're proud of you, Mrs. Mulehi, and make some few remarks, please.
Well, we appreciate the recognition. And as the other principals have already said, it takes a lot of people to make this happen and we appreciate that we've got this tool to give us the feedback because, again, we are always improving and it's nice to have that feedback. So, we appreciate the parent participation to help bring us to this point.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, this is amazing from Knoxville.
Thank you. And also, the most common stuff that's been made already, we're appreciative of this recognition and we thank you for the support given to us over our six years now. So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Soon closing, again, the areas that five essentials, they were scored on: effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involve families, supportive environment, and ambitious instruction. So, again, I'd like to thank the principals for coming over tonight, for all of your leadership, the school activities that you involve with. And I'd like, okay, and that's it. So, thank you. Appreciate you. I know you've had a long day, so you feel free to stay with us, but you're welcome to sneak out if you have to. Thank you.
Thank you, too Superintendent Corral. Next are our announcements. Anyone else? Mr. Shaw?
Enjoy the best of autumn at the October Parent University, Thursday, October 13th, at Tanner Orchard, located at 740, Route 40 North. Shuttle buses will be available at 4:30 and 5:00 p.m. from Peoria High School, Lincoln K-8, Manual Academy, WCTC, and Harrison Community Learning Center. This will be a fantastic evening for the whole family with tractor-driven wagon rides, a corn maze, and the back 40 fun acres, which includes a jumping jack pad, miniature golf, and much more. For details on all the fun into RSVP, go to www.poriapublicschools.org.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one. Yes. Three Richwoods High School students, Joshua Boer, Gustav Genetin, and Juliana Reeves, have been named semifinalists in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program. They're among the 16,000 nationally who now have the opportunity to qualify for the finest standing. Congratulations to all of these academically talented students. Give one hand clap. That's wonderful. Out of 16,000 nationally.
Good evening. Peoria Public High Schools will be celebrating homecoming during the next two weeks. This week, Richwoods High School will host a parade on Thursday evening, followed by a spaghetti dinner for students and families, a powder puff football game between the women of the junior and senior classes, and a bonfire. The Knights will face Peoria Notre Dame High School Friday night at 7:00 p.m. Former Richwoods High School administrators will be honored in a pre-game ceremony and the homecoming court will be introduced at halftime. The dance will be held on Saturday night. Peoria High School celebrates homecoming the week of October 3rd through the 7th with a Mardi Gras theme. On Thursday, October 6th, there will be a variety show in the school auditorium at 6:00 p.m. On Saturday, October 8th, the parade will depart Peoria High School at 1:00 p.m. for the Peoria Stadium, where the Lions will play Danville High School at 2:00 p.m. The homecoming dance will be on Saturday evening, October 8th, at 8:00 p.m. Manual Academy's homecoming festivities will also be held October 3rd through the 7th. There will be a stunt show on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, there will be an Olympics pep assembly at 1:45. And Friday's game festivities will begin at 5:30 p.m. The homecoming dance will be held on Saturday evening, October 8th, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
We should win that game, right?
For Danville? Yeah!
Mr. Walter?
Yeah. The free application for federal student aid or FAFSA application opens on October 1st, 2016, this coming Saturday, for the 2017-2018 school year. This is three months earlier than years past and will be based on 2015 tax returns. Students eligible for State of Illinois MAP grants and Peoria Promise students are urged to complete their FAFSA on October 1st or very soon thereafter. Illinois MAP grants are distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. Peoria Promise is offering a bonus for students who complete their FAFSA during the month of October, and the sooner the application is completed, the bigger the bonus. For example, Peoria Promise students who complete the FAFSA application between October 1st and October 5th will receive a bonus equal to 25% of their MAP grant. Students who submit their FAFSA between October 6th and October 10th will receive a bonus equal to 20% of their MAP grant. The Peoria Promise bonuses will decrease each week during the month of October. Students must complete the FAFSA by October 31st to be eligible for Peoria Promise. For information and details, please contact the high school guidance counselors. Manual Academy will host a FAFSA workshop on Monday, October 3rd, from 1 to 3 in the school library.
Thank you. Vice President Adler?
The Friends of Peoria County Schools, along with supporters, state and local elected officials, community leaders, and business owners, will gather at 3:30 p.m. Thursday, September 29th, at Richwoods High School on University Street to outline the benefits for every public school district in the county if voters approve a half percent sales tax referendum on November 8th. The school facility sales tax is about stronger schools, stronger buildings, and a stronger local economy. If approved by local voters, the tax will enable districts to make major investments in aging school buildings that the Illinois state budget and local property tax revenue cannot fund. The tax will generate approximately $9 million annually to be shared by 20 school districts and benefiting over 27,000 Peoria County students. The revenue will fund hundreds of projects, including new roofs, energy-efficient windows, HVAC systems, security upgrades, and technology upgrades. These projects will not only help our students and staff members, but create construction and renovation jobs for years to come. Public is encouraged to attend the meeting at 3:30 Thursday afternoon at Richwoods to learn more. Thank you.
Do you have an announcement also, Elizabeth?
Students from the Peoria High School Preparatory School for the Arts PSA Drama Performance Class will present the Fall Drama Showcase Thursday, September 29th at 7:00 p.m. in the Peoria High School Auditorium. Thirty-two drama performance students will perform short plays as part of their introductory acting unit. In addition, students are managing the stage and promotion for the event as part of their event promotion and sound tech unit. PSA drama students of all levels, 130 total, are building a supportive theater community and are involved in the showcase night. Take the time to enjoy their efforts this Thursday at 7:00 in the beautiful Peoria High School Auditorium.
Thank you. And I have, I have one, maybe two. This coming Wednesday, September 28th, is a SIP day. Students will be dismissed early. If your students are going in at 7:30, of course, it will be three hours later. If they go in at 8:30, it's three hours. I think it's 10:30 and 11:30, I believe, for dismissal. So, September 28th is a SIP day. Board members, well, let me go back. The Peoria Public School Foundation Classroom Grants application is Monday, October 3rd, at 11:59. I'm sure that means the application deadline, right, Chris? Doesn't say that. But anyway, classroom grants are available for teachers and administrators to implement innovative and creative projects. The maximum grant is $1,000. And guidelines and application is at www.ppsfoundation.org. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation also is offering field experiences grants for the first time this year. The maximum grant is $500 and can be used for a variety of extracurricular activities, including field trips to museums, cultural performances, and businesses. Field experience grants applications also are due on Monday, October 3rd, at 11:59 p.m. Again, application information is at www.ppsfoundation.org. Thank you. No more announcements. We are now in a place on the agenda for the, that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools District 150. The board welcomes your comments and suggests, and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our first amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have specific personnel concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, www.psd150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for you, some of you, to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. And our board secretary will be collecting those comments and compiling them and sharing them with the superintendent and the board. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person or each speaker has five minutes and no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp. Good evening, Mr. Knapp.
Should we also mention about the budget hearing first?
Yes. Thank you.
So, we'll have the budget hearing at 7 o'clock and I guess closest speaker till about there, we'll kind of stop and then go into the budget hearing and then come back to normal public comment.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I, this is just an observation. This card that we fill out to speak here was changed under the previous administration to delete a phrase down here at the bottom saying, "We welcome your comments. May we call you if you have any questions." That was re-added to the form, I believe, when Dr. Kratt got here, and now, all of a sudden, the last three meetings, it has disappeared again. I don't know if these are old cards that you're putting out or if this is a new policy that has changed since Lathan left, Kratt got here, and it's changed again. You can comment on that later. You can comment or not. I don't care. But I, I always have to write on there, "You may call me if you wish to." You know, I think that phrase should be on there. It was on originally. I don't think it should have been taken off. Next thing I'd like to talk about is the, this DVD that's a national documentary that's out. I gave a copy of this to Dr. Kratt. I gave a copy to Mr. Walter and urged him to put it, give it to the board secretary or whoever to put it in your archives, as I did with the book by Diane Ravitch on education. It's important that you watch this. This is about charter schools and more specifically, the Gulon schools, of which you had a Gulon school here. You know, I, it incenses me after I watched this hour and 20-minute documentation, or documentary, I should say, about charter schools and especially the Gulon schools, of which there are hundreds. And it's, it's something you need to be aware of. You know, our charter school here, as you know, had 75 kids in a class. I mentioned this to you before and nobody seems to care about it, but they only graduated 39 kids. I know Ms. Cruz and I went to the first meeting down at Civic Center and they said they were going to graduate 100% of their kids and they were going to have a system, a lottery system, if a student left the school, that they were going to be replaced in the school. No one has yet responded to me or at this horseshoe about where those 36 kids went that didn't graduate. Did they drop out? Were they kicked out? Were they expelled? I've heard some were expelled and went down to Woodruff. I mean, I, I want to know what's going on at that school. And I know sometimes people on this board think, "Well, that's not our school." I say, "No, it is your school." And the Gulon, Imam Gulon, who's worth 39 million, billion, excuse me, is under extradition by the President Erdogan, which I mentioned to you before, they're trying to take him back to Turkey and kill him, okay? Because of the coup that didn't succeed in Turkey. We sent four of our classes from Quest to Turkey. They went over there, had the invitation of the Turkish government or whoever, Imam Gulon, I think, and were subject to, according to this, to indoctrination and everything else, as are the legislators who grew over there free from the Turkish government. This is garbage. Garbage in, garbage out. We had this with the Edison schools. The people who ran the Edison schools came in here, bulked us of $40 million. When I was IPO and our people in this community invested in that stock, it went from $20 a share to $39 a share. In six weeks, it was 14 cents a share. 14 cents. And then Caterpillar and others, the Chamber and everybody else, had Edison kicked out of Peoria. This is what you deal with when you get into it with private companies. You should not deal with private companies that are, on their surface, for-profit companies. You need to look into this at Edison, excuse me, at Quest and what they're doing there. I mean, it's incumbent upon you. We renewed the contract for five years. They removed the Turkish representatives because the FBI came in and took all the records. This is going on all over the country. It's in here. Not just in our school district. Texas, you know, is just over the, outraged by these schools. You need to know what you're bringing into this community. Board members just can't sit there and say, "Well, you know, the ex-CEO of Caterpillar, you know, charmed us and that's why we took the school here." Because that's what happened. You know, it's politics. And you don't need to be involved in politics. You need to be involved in these kids' lives. The Woodruff kids and the North Indian kids were replaced by the school. Now, where's the research as to what the Woodruff kids are doing? Are they out of school? Did they drop out? Were they passing? Are they going to college? No research. Zero research. You need to do your research. I do. Thank you. I'll do the rest under the next, next portion.
It's about two, one minute before, so we won't start another speaker, but want to start the hearing now? Okay. So, the budget hearing is now open. Are there any comments from the public?
I gave you a forum tonight. This was a FOIA that I put in with the city last week and got a response on Friday. You all have a copy. This is the money I've been talking about and this is part of the budget because we need to recover as much money as we can. This money, and I would like to ask you the question, but you can't respond, but I've asked people, "How much money have we gotten from the Riverboat in Peoria over the last, since the inception of the Riverboat?" They gave me this. I asked people, "Hey, what, we get $500,000, a million dollars?" We got $83 million from the Riverboat in the last, since '94, in the last 24 years or whatever it's been. 83 million. Not a nickel has gone to children in this community. The Riverboat was passed on the backs of education. We need to get the money from, the school board needs to get the money that you should get from the city. The city should pay you to transfer that stadium to the Park District. Give you the money, get you off from underneath your $300,000 debt, and let the Park District and other community activists in Peoria run that stadium. You're not doing any marketing with the stadium. You refuse to do it. Everything that was at the stadium is now gone. You need to transfer it, but you need to get your money from the city. $83 million that the city simply doesn't give you, along with their TIF districts, along with the fact that they didn't support your tax referendum last time and probably won't support it this time. If they, if they come out in support of it, we got an election coming up. We need to replace councilman and the mayor, who is not in favor of supporting our schools. Our inner-city kids have been bulked, um, excuse me, have been basically bulked out of millions of dollars. 83 million? This is sad. It's criminal. Besides that, the, the other thing I want to talk about as far as finances concerned, besides the TIF districts and being against the sales tax, we need to get what's due to us. These TIF districts are killing us. I know you know it, but I never see anybody when it comes into an election, I know what the people, you know, from Charter Oak did with, you know, putting new board members on. We have a good board right now. Fairly good board. We could stand to look at that, too. But the city council and the mayor have just tortured us, tortured the school district. You don't ask them to come out in favor of anything or against anything. So, you need to do that, in my estimation. That having been said, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the budget? Seeing none?
Eighty-three million dollars that the city simply doesn't give you, along with their TIF districts, along with the fact that they didn't support your tax referendum last time, and probably won't support it this time. If they come out in support of it, we got an election coming up. We need to replace councilman and the mayor, who is not in favor of supporting our schools. Our inner-city kids have been bulked, I'm, excuse me, have been basically bulked out of millions of dollars. Eighty-three million? This is sad, it's criminal. Besides that, the other thing I want to talk about as far as finances concerned, besides the TIF districts and being against the sales tax, we need to get what's due to us. These TIF districts are killing us. I know you know it, but I never see anybody when it comes into an election, I know what the people, you know, from Charter Oak did with, you know, putting new board members on. We have a good board right now, fairly good board, we could stand to look at that, too. But the city council and the mayor have just tortured us, tortured the school district. You don't ask them to come out in favor of anything, or against anything. So you need to do that, in my estimation. That having been said, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the budget? Seeing none? I declare the budget hearing closed. Thank you. Now, going back to our speakers, Ms. Andrea Totoro, welcome.
Thank you, President Ross, board members, and Superintendent Karat. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the campaign for the Peoria County Schools Facility Sales Tax. Thank you for bringing up, sir, the lack of support from the mayor and the city council last time around. This time, the mayor has agreed to not speak against this referendum, and we are working to talk with every city council member to get their support. We currently do not have any endorsement from city council members, although we hope that will change soon. Today, it was announced that the Peoria City County Board of Health has endorsed this Schools Facility Sales Tax, because the board believes that strong schools equal healthy communities. That was reported today in the media, you can check it out online. As Mr. Adler mentioned, on Thursday, September twenty-ninth, at 3:30 p.m., that's this Thursday at Richwoods High School, the Friends of Peoria County Schools will hold a news conference to kick off what we're calling the "Yes Vote" campaign. We have state legislators, business owners, parents, students, and many other supporters of this sales tax referendum who will be joining us. I hope everyone in this room will come out and join us. We need to get the word out, there's not been a lot of coverage of the sales tax campaign yet, we hope to change that. Lawn signs will be available the weekend of October eighth. A countywide billboard campaign will begin on or about October tenth, so please keep an eye out for that. And we have scheduled so far one public forum, we hope to have at least two or three. The first will be Monday, October seventeenth, from six to eight p.m. at the Carver Center. The purpose of this event is to invite the public to come and learn more about the sales tax, how it will work, and how all schools in the county can benefit from this. Members from affected school districts and supporters will be there to answer questions. All of this activity is possible because we have a small, but very busy group of volunteers, and we are starting to receive some donations coming in, although we don't have enough to get the word out as much as we would like. We'd like to do a mailing, radio ads would be great. But if anyone would like to make a donation, you can do so online at friendsofpeoriacountyschools.org, and click on the Donate tab when you get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Charlie Thomas.
Good evening.
Evening. First of all, before I start, that's a great group of principals over there, hopefully we can hang on to them and get some more just like them. My question is, Angie didn't show, so does she lose a star. All right, unfortunately, I'm speaking as only a parent tonight. I was a teacher in this district for a lot of years, my wife is still a teacher in this district. Had an issue that happened to my daughter at Richwoods, that being in this district, this is why I'm so confused, because I know how these things work. It started off that she showed up to school for her first-hour class, walked in, came in, on time as far as I know, took the test that was due that day, and then at the end of the hour, she was informed by her first-hour teacher that she smelled like pot. And she goes, he asked her something else, like, "You smell like pot, why do you smell like pot?" And she goes, "I don't know why I smell like pot, but I didn't do anything with pot." And he goes, "Okay, I'm not going to do anything about it, but you can't come to school like that." So she was offended by this, but she went ahead about her business, walked out, and ran into a SRO, and says, "Do you think," this was first hour, right after first, she says, "Do you think this outfit is going to make it through the day?" And she happens to know this SRO, because I know her also, and she says, "No, you better get new clothes." So she walks down to the AP's office to call me to get clothes. When she walks in, she is immediately not grabbed, not physically touched, verbally said, "You're high, look at you, you're high." And this was coming from an AP that I know very well, it's not her AP. It was a man, and then another man that was there. And they, so they verbally attacked her. So, this went on for about, she said, ten to fifteen minutes, I had not been called. By the way, I know every one of these people personally, and they know me, and they know who my daughter is. Now, I'm not saying you should get special consideration, but my goodness, a little common courtesy, they know us. So anyway, this process goes on, finally I get a call from her AP. The AP on the phone makes it sound like she had just been arrested for dealing and has fifty pounds of pot in the back of the car. Well, that upset me to say the least, in fact, I had to have someone drive me there. And I don't get upset like that very often, this is my baby girl, so I'm a little upset. So anyway, I finally get there, walk in, go into her AP's office, and he pretty much informs me that he had made a call to Ms. Marlin, who handles all this. I said, "Okay, I know her too, not very well, but I do know who she is." And he says, "This is what's coming back, you're getting a suspension, and you're putting on a bans." Of course, I know what all that means. I know a lot of kids, I've been part of that process, putting people on a bans and stuff, for smelling like she smoked. Smelling. Not smoking, not, nothing on her, no paraphernalia, nothing. So anyway, the process even gets better. So we go on, of course, I said, "That's wrong, I'm going to argue this, blah, blah, blah." I said, "Is Mr. Elliott available, who's the principal?" Once again, know Mr. Elliott very well, he worked on my basketball staff at one time when I coached. So anyway, because I know I'm going to run out, and I can't run out on this, so I got to hurry, but basically what took place is, they suspended her for smelling like pot, for no other reason. I know for a fact, I went to Woodruff last year, I had two kids that I rolled up to the same person that suspended her for one day for smelling like pot. This kid possessed pot and got an in-school suspension. Now, something is screwed up, and I'm going to be honest with you, board, the reason I'm saying this now, and I'm not proud of this, is that I don't know if you know this, Dr. Karat, I'm not sure she knows this, I really don't know the process on this end of it. By the way, I was so upset with my daughter, I immediately, immediately took her to Proctor Hospital and had a test done. I submitted that test to the AP, the test for every possible drug in her system, they all come up absent. Not a percent, not even a anything in her system. But she got suspended. Now, we finally got some information back, somebody decided to email us back finally, and says, "Well, you got to go to a hearing to clear this up." What the heck is that? Dr. Karat, if you don't know what's going on, there are some people on your staff that absolutely do not have a clue. And that's a shame. That's a shame. Boy, I had a lot more to say, dang it.
Thank you. The next name is Jennifer, last name, pronounce your last name for me, Jennifer.
Clark.
Oh, okay. We were just trying to figure that out. Jennifer Clark, thank you.
I'm having an issue with District 150 also. There's absolutely no clue what's going on in your district, is not even close to what it is. We've had bullying issue for almost three years. At one school, I get told constantly, "Just ignore it, it'll go away, we'll take care of it." You know what? It was taken care of. Well, my oldest went with my daughter to a football game, and she said, "Hey, don't walk behind me, because I don't know what's going to happen." So she walked in front of her, what happened? She was jumped. I'm pissed. What happened to these kids? Nothing. Why? Because of their age. Detention centers started twelve, um, nobody was suspended, they were told, "Don't do it again," to slap on their hand. I have video proof, the first four seconds of this girl running down the hill to jump my daughter wasn't caught on video, so we can't do anything about it. That's crap. I have it on tape. Well, your daughter is seen swinging also. You're right, she was seen swinging. She was seen swinging to defend herself, to defend her sister. Three, almost three years of laughing it off. Hey, this person's calling me this name. She called you what? Are you kidding? I've tried everything to pull them out of 150. If I could homeschool my kids and quit school, you better believe it, I would be out of District 150. It's almost to the point where, what do I even do? They don't want to go to school anymore, they've gone from straight A's to C's, I have to drag her out of bed, I've got to bribe them. I don't think you guys understand the bullying concept that happens here in District 150. I've talked to numerous kids, I work with District 150, numerous families, more than I can possibly count on two hands, that have pulled their children because of bullying. It is out of control. What do you do? Where do you go with it? She doesn't want to go to school. I have to force her. You know where that leads a child who gets bullied constantly? To hurt herself. Well, why do I go, Mom? Nobody likes me. She gets picked on every single day. You know what we're told? Just ignore it, it'll go away. How much do you, how much do you ignore? When does it possibly go away? When your principals and your teachers decide to do something? And it's not just the children that bully your student, it's also the staff. I've had staff bully, I've heard it, can't tell me that it doesn't happen. I've heard it, I've listened to it, I've watched it happen. I went to Richwoods last week to my daughter for her birthday, to give her balloons, I was, I couldn't leave a square in the front of the, by the door. Don't leave the square, you can't leave a square. Are you kidding me? I'm older than you are, and you're telling me I can't leave a square? I couldn't walk past the guy in the armor to give her balloons. Nothing's going to happen, she stood right there. The bullying issue in District 150 is beyond ridiculous, to the point where I feel bad. When your child has to put on medication because they can't cope with going to school with your district. I don't even know where else to go. If I could leave, I would leave my stuff here, I would just get up and go. But I have to have a job. I have three kids, my husband's retired from the military. Here we are, in Peoria, it's a sad place. If I would have known that they could have gone to Woodruff to get away from it, she would have gone. Oh, no, because nobody tells you, hey, there's a program here that can help your daughter, that can keep them safe, that she can go to and be okay to go to school, but we're going to keep it secret, and then we're just going to throw it out the window. So here she still goes, to her school, terrified every single day. When something seriously happens, what am I supposed to do? Nobody's got an answer, because you know why? We'll just ignore it. Eventually, it'll go away.
Mr. Jesse McGowan, junior?
Good afternoon, Jesse McGowan, junior, 707 East Plush. I think I changed my map where I was going to say when I came up here. This is concerning the contemporary school that everyone was in such an uproar about. And I think it's, I'm trying to choose my word, President Ross, I may get on it later, if I don't. I think it's going to the ridiculous stages. Dr. Karat has thirteen, well, twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand students in this school district that she's trying to educate. You have anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred, depending on who you ask, that's being taught by volunteers, or substitutes, or whatever. You had sixty-four, sixty-five students in a school, fourteen, fifteen teachers, you have four or five kids per teacher. No one is concerned about all of these kids that are not getting the education, and twenty-five, thirty students in a class, because you've got this handful of teachers that hasn't got the jobs, and they don't want to lose them. If you were a teacher, and you were truly interested in the development of these students, you would say, "Dr. Karat, I'm available, use me where you need me most." That wasn't done, because you want to stay in the position that you were in, and not, I haven't heard anyone state that this is for the betterment of all the students, because it's not. You want your little niche, and you want to stay there. You've got the parents that got their kids, and there's a thousand students in this school district that could have been, that need to be in that type of school, they'd be cut off yet. I mean, it's not like she threw them out, there are other arrangements were made to take care of those students, you've got Mr. Booth, the commander, that's going to handle those. So it's not like those kids have been thrown out. But these kids that don't have regular teachers, basically what they're doing is telling them to be thrown out. If my grandkids, and I found out my grandkid was being taught by substitutes, when there's teachers available that only has four or five students, that's when I would be angry. But nobody's concerned about the overall welfare of all these kids. And then you've got these special interest groups, the unions, or whatever, the other special interest group that has these hand-picked board numbers, that's going to basically, I've never heard any of them state, "This is for the betterment of the kids," or, "Oh." It's all about a certain group. Once you get outside that category, then all of a sudden, you become a target. None of these same people never spoke up, when all, you've got all of these young black kids walking to school in these terrible districts, they're walking mile, mile and a half, nobody said anything. But you take a handful of kids, that these certain teachers, backed by the union, and I wouldn't run, I'm a union, I'm a retired teamster, but when you've got unions and teachers that are going outside the realms of this overall welfare and benefit of all the students, for a select few teachers are students, and you're not giving the superintendent any credit for trying to make it better for everyone, and you're not volunteering, you're not offering anything to make it better for everyone. You only want what you want, and hell with everybody else, and I think that's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Where am I on this agenda? Okay. Response to audience presentation, are there any response to audience presentation? Mr. Walther?
I have several. First of all, Ms. Clark, could you please tell me what school that you were referring to?
I don't, Mr. Walther, I don't know if we can do back and forth like that, can we?
Well, it was response, I thought it was response to that.
Saying so.
It's only one of them.
Okay.
Mr. Welch has been in contact with, one of our staff has been in contact.
Okay.
You're not saying anything, so we're supposed to not be back and forth with people, right?
I thought it was a response to that. I do have a response, I'm glad Mr. Welch is going to take a look at that. I guess I do have a response to the last speaker, too, Mr. McGowan. I do care about all the kids. I also care about the kids who work at the Woodruff Academy, or Temporary School. Those classes were designed to be small, that was it. My reason that I was upset was as much about the process that was done. Mr. McGowan, we have a balancing act here on the school board. I am concerned, the fact that we've got forty or fifty still openings, that we have substitute teachers there. The balancing act was, what were we going to do for the needs of these kids? There wasn't a discussion with this board, that decision was made unilaterally by the administration. Those kids were told, in some of those cases, got two days' notice, some of them found out about it on the evening news. So there also has to be responsibility to those families, and I hope that those kids are being taken care of. I had talked about reintroducing a motion to reinstitute the school, I'm not going to do that. The reason I'm not going to do that is because I think it would be more disruptive to the kids and to the teachers who were there. And those teachers who were there, were there because they volunteered, and that's not a gravy job. If you had a chance to be at that school, they had some very difficult and challenging kids that they did a very good job for. So our balancing act is the school board to make sure that all the kids are taken care of, and I do care about all the kids, and I do care about the fact that we don't have enough teachers here in the district. And that's not all our fault, that's a statewide problem that we're having with it right now. So I appreciate your concerns, and I respect your opinion, sir, but that's all I've got. Thanks.
Other comments? But anyone else want a board response from the board? I do have to clear one thing up. I mean, other board members are sitting here, and so am I, and this decision was not made unilaterally. The decision was made with the consent and with the communication with all board members. So it wasn't, it wasn't a unilateral decision, it wasn't a decision made necessarily by the superintendent, although superintendent does have the authority to do program changes whenever she needs to, because that's in her lane. We have a lane, and superintendent has a lane. And I don't think we quite understand our lane yet, but I'm going to do my best to help people understand that. So it wasn't a decision made without checking with board members, and actually getting the consensus from board members that we could do this. So, I just want to clear that up. I don't necessarily like information to go out that is not necessarily correct.
When was that made? When was that consensus made? That's absolutely not true, ma'am.
Well, Mr. Walther, we don't need Walter, we don't need to debate that here, but I know that Dr. Karat spoke with you.
Why not?
I know that she spoke with you, as well as every other single board member. Are there other board members that she had spoken with regarding this, uh, this change and this need to do this? Ms. Jackson?
Uh, Dr. Karat did call me, but I think that's really not the issue. The issue is, is that there are board decisions and there is administrative decisions. That was a, a decision that was an administrative decision, and board members handle policy, the administration handled the administrative side of it. And that's two different things. Dr. Karat has a right to make a decision regarding administrative issues, and we can agree and we can disagree about them. And we hired her to make those kind of decisions. And if it is, if it turns out not right, then we deal with her. But if it's the right decision, we also celebrate with her. But that was a decision, that was an administrative decision, and I think that we as board members appreciate upfront letting us know what's gonna happen, but we should not get involved in the decisions of the administration. We, we supervise the superintendent and we want her to succeed, and we want her to make those decisions that are strictly administrative decisions. We make policy, she does the other part of it.
Thank you. Okay. Daphne?
As far as the comment card, I just used old ones, and so I will make sure to get the correct one out with the information at the bottom. So I apologize for that. I use the old comment cards, just replace them, but I will.
Thank you.
Put them back, get them with the right information on them.
I know that the.
Yes.
The format that I read has that in there as well. The comment that I read before each, uh, each audience presentation has that information in there. Okay? So we'll have a new comment card. Information items. Salary compensation, was there any questions or comments on that salary compensation? Proposed expenditures over twenty-five hundred dollars. Any comments or questions, Mr. Welch?
Anything out of the ordinary, Mr. Welch, this time of year?
A reported request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request, Dr. Karat?
Since our last board meeting on September 12th, we've received nine requests. There are three pending requests. Two of those were filled. We have received fifty-two requests for this calendar year at a cost of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Consent agenda, action items.
The consent agenda consists of the following items for this evening. Uh, first, gifts to the school district. Uh, this meeting, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, here to date, one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, second item is payment of bills. Item three, payment for travel. Item four, the human resources report. Item five, field hit, field trip approval for Ridgewood's High School to Purdue University. Uh, item number six, a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and Local 6099, the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, cafeteria, clerical, paraprofessional, and school-related personnel, IFT, AFT, AFL-CIO regarding stipend for non-certified behavioral coaches. And item number seven, the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and Local 6099, the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, cafeteria, clerical, paraprofessional, and school-related personnel, IFT, AFT, AFL-CIO. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to call for a separate Okay. Then may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the entire consent agenda.
Second. Are there any discussions on, uh, items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Atler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carrying.
On the deliberation agenda, we have expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance. Will you be reading, Ms. Kostick?
Sure. Thank you. Call's action is that the expulsion, with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated September 26th, 2016, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Atler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carrying.
Number nine, budget resolution, Mr. Atler?
The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Peoria School District 150, County of Peoria, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared for a tentative budget, and the Secretary of the Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least thirty days prior to final action thereon. And whereas, a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 26th day of September 2016, notice of said hearing was given at least thirty days prior thereto required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows, that the budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and the expenditures from each be in the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. I move that we adopt this resolution.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the move in second. Uh, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Atler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carrying.
Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members? Are there any? Mr. Walter?
I promised I'd be brief, because we wanted to get home and see the debate, so I'll be brief. Yeah, the suggestion is that I think we need to have a clarification here on the board on what is policy and what is administrative decision. I believe what, um, what the superintendent did really felt in the realm of policy, and on that point, I agree with Ms. Jackson. Uh, we are to set policy, and I believe that was a policy that should've been brought before the board. That's just my opinion, and I think we need to clarify that. It was done in a very gray area of administrative purview. So I think it would be better to communicate with this all directly and have a vote on whether we're gonna close a temporary school. That's what I think should've happened. And I may be in error, but that's my opinion on it, so I'm sure you can, um, enlighten me as to what the policy is and isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, Mr. Shaw?
Just a comment on the, the incident at Treewind School. The, there was a Journal Star article on that incident, and in that article, they mentioned that the parents weren't notified for two days of that, of that potential medical situation. They also did not find any policy on, any policy that laid out the timeline for which parents need to be notified of a medical situation. And, um, so that's a situation that I feel that we as a board need to address, and, um, I've already mentioned this to the, to the policy committee, so we can take it up.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm passing around, let's see, I just have, we'll get you. What I'm passing around is the board agreement, I'd like to reiterate, do I have enough comments for the board? Okay, then we do have enough comments, we have one, just the board, yeah, there you go. What I'm passing around is the Peoria Public School Board Agreement that we all, um, read and signed on July 1st, 2016. We do it every July 1st. And, um, it talks about agenda agreement, um, which will give some instructions and directions on whether, if board members want to add something to the agenda, when and how far out you need to do that. And it kinda goes along with administration as well. Daphne, um, has an email that goes out to all administration, Dr. Karat, uh, indicating that she'd like to have the, uh, agenda items by four o'clock on a Tuesday, um, so that she will have time to get everything written up to get to Dr. Karat. Everything needs to go to Dr. Karat for her approval, before it goes to Daphne for her to put on the agenda. And we do agenda setting, Mr. Atler and I currently, board president and vice president, and the superintendent and the secretary sit down and do agenda setting. We are now, we used to do it on Wednesday, we're now doing it on Thursday, but that still gives a short timeline for our secretary to get everything written, uploaded, and to the media. There's some, some ramifications as far as legal ramifications about getting things out forty-eight hours ahead. So that, and that goes for any board member or administration that would like to have something on the agenda. She needs to have it before, uh, by Tuesday of that week, before the board meeting by four o'clock. And that's in our agreement. We, we all sign this agreement and we agree to these terms of the agreement, um, doing board meeting agreements, after-the-board meeting agreement, site visit agreements, how we conduct a site visit as board. This is, this is an agreement that is just signed by the board, and the superintendent also signed it. Board, community communications, emergency information, and, um, this is on file, and it's also posted, is that correct?
The code of conduct is posted.
Code of conduct is posted. But I just wanted to refresh everybody, did you get a copy? Mrs. Jackson? Refresh everyone's memory on the agreements that we all agreed to. And then I would also encourage everyone, as you go along, we have a lot of policies that we're responsible for, so, and there's no way you can sit and read all the policies at one time, but it, it might, it might make for some good midnight reading if you'd like to pull it up online and read maybe a policy or two a day. It'll real definitely keep you awake, or put you to sleep, one of those. So, so those are the policies. Our policies are, uh, you know, we take the direction from Springfield, from the State Board of Education, but we also devote some policies locally as well. We take those policies that they send us and we tweak them to meet our needs, um, and so that they will do what needs to be done here. But I would just encourage everyone to, um, continue to educate yourself on these policies, so, and if you have any questions, you know, you could call me, or you could call Daphne, she knows policies pretty good, or you could talk to Dr. Karat, who, who we hand the policies to, and she write the administrative procedure to, and she carries them out. So she's on the floor, we are in the balcony. We try not to dance with her on the floor, except when absolutely necessary, or maybe she invites us to a dance.